Good evening, everyone. I am Mary Colar. I'm the Chair of the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee, and I'm calling the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is public comment on any matter not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda will have five minutes to speak. Anyone here for an item not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Before we continue with the meeting, I'd like to make brief introductions of the committee members and staff. To my right, our supervisors Jerry Bullock and El Matano, and we'll probably shortly be joined by Supervisor Patrick Miles. Staff here this evening, our zoning administrator Roger Lane, Assistant Zoning Administrator Don Iverson.
Dan.
Did I say Dan?
Yes.
Don, you said Don.
Okay. You know, because I'm looking ahead at Majid's name isn't on here, and Majid Allen's title is...
Senior Planner.
Senior Planner, thank you. And we've just been joined by Youth Governance Member Joel Finkelmeier. I haven't heard, is Garrett going to join us?
I don't believe so.
Okay. For the format this evening, the committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out a white registration form and submit it, the sheet, to the staff. The form's over there, they look like this, and hand it to the staff. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to the podium to address the committee, and appear at these chairs, please. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is as follows: after the petitioner or agent, any other persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the committee, the members up here, and not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. The committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to our meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full county board. If the committee passes the petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend a county board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is the final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the county board. The next county board meeting is March 9th, the next ZLR meeting is March 14th. So our first item is a rezone petition 11,083, and it's Began Living Trust in the town of Primrose.
I'm John O'Began, 8853 Kobe Road, Mount Harbor Post Office. The property is located in the northwest one quarter, northwest one quarter, Section 4. The petition for rezone is actually isn't a rezone. We have a certified survey map now, but when it was created about 28 years ago, somebody didn't change the zoning. So it's still zoned Ag 1, and my petition is to...for building a home.
I just want to clarify, you're Don?
Yeah, I'm Don.
Okay, so you filled this out? This is your form?
Yeah, I filled it out.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us?
Pardon?
Anything else?
No, I only hope that you, as a committee, see fit to approve my request.
Okay, thank you.
My son is going to buy it, and is subject to approval for rezone. Now, I don't know if you want to get into Native American cemeteries.
You have some mounds on the property?
I have eight mounds on the property. I've taken good care of them for the 28 years that I've owned the property, and my son is very well acquainted with all of them, so just so that you know they're there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Primrose has still not taken action on this petition. Staff is recommending that deed notice be placed on the property, which identifies the Native American burial mounds, and that any development on the property must comply with Wisconsin Statute 157.
Supervisor Bullock?
Yes, I have a question for the petitioner. Is it a problem to put that deed notice on the property regarding the burial mounds?
No, there's a single mound on the building site that's on, actually right on the lot line itself. There will be no improvements anywhere close to it.
Sounds great.
The balance of the burial mounds are on the other wooded parcel that joins it.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we haven't received the town action report yet, as you heard, so we'll have to postpone that at this time, so I'll make a motion to postpone.
Just real quick, we did meet with the planning commission, they did approve it and send a letter here that would, they recommended that it could be approved pending the board vote that'll happen in about a week, and that would be what we would ask for.
This petition will be placed on the meeting coming up in two weeks. So next week, the town will approve it, the week after, the ZLR committee will approve it, and then it'll be on to the county board. So at that time, you can start construction at any time.
We don't need to attend the ZLR meeting then?
Assuming there is no opposition, so our next meeting is the 14th, you know, if some neighbor would come before and register an opposition, but if there's no opposition, it should be on our calendars, items from previous meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Second amendment?
Yes, he did.
Did you call for any opposition?
I did.
Okay, yes, so I seconded him.
And all in favor of postponement, say aye.
Aye.
And the rezone is postponed. Next is rezone petition 11,084, Helsing in the town of Pleasant Springs.
My name is Neil Helsing. Here's an agent for my brother Mark Helsing and myself.
Okay, please.
What we're looking to do is transfer building rights from our home farm to a lot, about 2.2 acres. That is not, it's on a sloopy area, and we've had to use no-till farming on it, so we don't have erosion. And we want to zone that Ag 2, too, and then the rest of the farm ground, we would like to go from Ag 2 to Ag 4. There was a screw-up on this. We did not have any intention of RH 4.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Yes, unfortunately, we have not heard back from the town of Pleasant Springs regarding the disposition of this petition.
I'll postpone it. And I'll second.
Had they taken action on that? Like the town...
The planning commission?
The planning commission did, but I don't believe the town, full town board did.
No, we have not.
Okay, just double-checking.
So we'll check their meetings and anticipate that we'll bring it up again on March 14th. Okay, thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone due to lack of town action? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the rezone is postponed. Next is rezone petition 11,085, Mighty Oak Farm in the town of Dane.
Howdy, folks. I'm Jim Grothman. I'm the agent for Mighty Oak Farm, and beside me here is Susan Ridenzell, and she is one of the owners of Mighty Oak Farm LLC. This property is located in Section 12 of Dane, the town of Dane, where its existing zoning is A1 exclusive. We're looking to rezon three parcels, RH 1 and two RH 2s.
Okay, I just, I have a lot of people here.
I'm sorry.
Amy Gallagher wishing to speak in support. And, anyway, and I have, you're Susan.
Yes.
And Chuck is, got both wishing to speak registering.
I have yours, too.
Okay, and Eva.
And I'm listening.
Okay. The registering in support is Thomas Gallagher. Available for information is James Grothman. Okay. Okay, anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
She wanted to speak, but the lady just said no.
Did you?
I just wanted to go on record for supporting it.
Okay. I do have a registrant wishing to speak in opposition, Dennis Uvsted. Okay. Do you have anything else to say in support? Okay, then if you can, you can go back to your seats.
Oh, really?
Unless, you'll have a chance to rebuttal for three minutes. Sir, Dennis, if you could come on up, you wish to speak in opposition?
Yeah, this is, you know, I'm a neighbor, so it's kind of, I don't really want to have hard feelings with my neighbor, but I feel now is my time to speak or forever hold my peace, and so I am bravely coming up here and doing this. But the thing that I feel is about this property is that there's a lot of sites on the property that are very, very good for developing. I have no, you know, they got the right to put their, they've got enough land, they can put their home sites out there, but my objection is with the sites. They're on ag land, actual fields, there's a lot of, it's zoned ag, but it's pasture and wooded, and there's a lot of that type of land that's available out here, but the sites that they've selected are actually in the fields. Once you take this ag land out of production, it's gone forever, and that's something we're very short of in Dane County. And ag land now is almost as valuable as development land, so I don't see why they can't find, you know, two, one of the sites is okay because there was a, there's buildings there that used to be a home site, but the two that are furthest south are fields, and it should be put in the woods or in the old pasture land. There's about half and half, the land's about half wooded and pasture and half fields. So that's my objection. I know they're going to say that this is marginal agricultural land, they still spread manure on it. I know, because I live right next to it, my house is right there, they still spread manure on it, and they still use it for, you know, hay, and they had corn in the one site one year, but it's still good, it's still being used as ag land or as a field. So that's really all I have to say. I just think that once this land is gone, is put out into a building site, it's going to be gone, and we're running out of it, so I just feel that they should reconsider and try to find some sites that wouldn't use their fields, because there's a lot of them there, a lot of nice ones, too. It's a beautiful farm.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's all I got to say.
And if the petitioner would like to respond?
That consideration, as far as the quality of the farmland, was considered. We have Class II soils lying immediately south of that one little leg, that tether that connects the old building site. The very northern parcel was a building site a long time ago. The area lying south of that tether was, or is, Class II soils, and that consideration was definitely weighed. The area in the triangle piece that lies to the west of Lee Road, that is a piece that the families had a very hard time renting. It's not very large, it is sloped, and that I don't think, have you ever gotten rent off that piece?
We let our renter for free cut the hay off of it.
So it's marginal at best. Again, we're planning a building site there. We're moving the existing building site that we had, whether it was a second home or third home on this property, in the triangle where I mentioned where the good soils were. We're attempting to move that building site that we have pre-existing, move it down to the corner area where it's very difficult to rent and people don't want to farm. The other area lying east of Lee Road, that's a rocky top. That's a difficult farm field to farm, and we're also trying to include some of the steep slope that's included within that wooded area that you see that we're including on the north, northeastern side. But other than that, it is a rocky top, and we thought maybe we would place a home in that location as well, in marginal soils.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I would just add that last parcel that Jim spoke about, the home would not take up all the ag land either. We would certainly plan to still rent quite a bit of it, because the home isn't going to take up all five acres.
Okay, thank you.
There is a lot of farmland, folks, that's left, and these folks intend to continue farming.
I would just add, there is also a beautiful oak savanna that is, you don't come across those every day, and this has been in our family since the 1850s. Putting a home, it might be one of the best sites to put a home, but it also doesn't seem like it should go there. It's really almost heavenly back there with these huge, big oaks.
The oaks and savanna that Amy is referring to is lying immediately north of the existing farm set that you see at the end of the driveway, in that area there is where the mature and legacy oaks are located.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger?
The town of Dane has taken action on this petition. They approved the petition with no conditions. Staff recommends that a notice document be recorded on the balance of the A1 exclusive land, indicating that there is still one housing density right remaining available. The Dane County Water Resources Engineering Division is concerned with the leg portions of the flag lots. Prior to platting, they would like an engineer to review the narrow area to see if it could accommodate storm water management features.
Supervisor Bullock?
Yes, due to the fact that we've had opposition tonight, our committee procedure is to postpone for at least one meeting, so I'm going to make a motion to postpone.
Second. Supervisor Miles?
Question for Roger. You just mentioned the town action to notice that there's one dispute remaining. Is that what you said?
That is correct, one housing density.
The density report on the things that says that the things that this is approved, the density splits will be exhausted.
Can I respond to that? So the property consisted not only of an original farm unit, but also a, you know, a substandard parcel, in other words, it was under two different ownerships at the date of adoption of the town plan, so that's where the one additional development right is coming from. So they've got a grandfathered site, and that's what the notice intended to... Because now, the land is all now consolidated under their ownership, what used to be two separate properties as of the date of town plan adoption, which determines the allocation of development rights. Now that it's under, you know, one ownership, we felt it appropriate to put a notice on there so that the grandfathered status, which kind of, you know, is hard to trace, and we have the parcel status determination, I think, in your packet, so this is just a way to ensure that they're not losing something that they're entitled to under the town plan. Potentially entitled to, I should say, pending approval, of course.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone due to opposition. And a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the petition is postponed. Moving on to rezone petition 11,086, Radamacher in the town of Medina.
Hi, I'm Bruce Radamacher. I'm representing my brother Brian Radamacher. My address, 2180 Highway T., Sun Prairie. My brother would like to separate the house and buildings from the farm and also create a residential lot.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Roger?
The town of Medina has approved this petition, conditioned upon the town animal unit deed restriction being recorded along with the certified survey map. This petition has been amended slightly. It adds a very tiny 66-foot wide lot. The lot is created in order to allow access to the 40-acre field to the west.
So that's the one that the SAG report says for which there should be a deed restriction prohibiting residential development on that?
That's correct. No, that is the 82 Perrin 1 to the east of Oak Park Road. That's the one just with the buildings. So the idea is, the home site, the original home site is on the west side of Oak Park Road. That's going to be sold in conjunction with the barns on the east side of the road, and they'll be tied together, because if there's a road, it has to be two separate lots instead of one, so they'll be tied together and to deed restrict the Easterly Lot, not to have any houses on it, correct?
And I will move approval with the town conditions and the apartment to a deed restriction on the Easterly Lot.
A second. Okay, we have a motion to approve, that's a town conditions and deed restriction recommended by staff. And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the rezone is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is rezone petition 11,087, Michael Larson in the town of Cross Plains.
Good evening. My name is Mike Larson. My address is 3745 Highway P., Pine Bluff, Town of Cross Plains. There's a property there that's zoned B1. We're looking to have that rezoned to 821. It's B1, it's always had a conditional use permit on it, as far as the photos go, as far back as they go. Earlier than 1955, it's always had a house in there, so it's always had a conditional use permit. So the goal is just to get this into conforming and then also add a accessory building.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Roger?
The town of Cross Plains has not taken action on this petition yet.
Postponement? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone due to lack of town action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's postponed. You understand, Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next we have a rezone 11,089 and also CUP 2369. It's John Ziegler in the town of Rutland.
John and Sandra Ziegler, 1256 US Highway 14. We're asking for a zoning change from RH 1 to LC 1 Limited Commercial. The zoning change would allow us to keep some of our equipment, business equipment, in a storage building there. Our son lives on the property, there is a farmhouse there now, along with a barn also, and then our CUP would ask that he be allowed to, we'd keep the house there, he could stay in it, and that is allowed under the LC 1.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Pardon?
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Rutland has approved both the rezoning petition and the conditional use permit. The rezoning petition to be approved with limits on the business, that it would be confined inside storage of business equipment only, and then the approved condition upon, the conditional use permit, approved condition upon the business owner occupying the residence.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone with the town and staff conditions.
A second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the rezone with town and staff conditions. And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll follow up now with a motion to approve the CUP with the town and staff conditions.
A second. So we have a motion to approve the CUP with town and staff conditions. And a second, any further discussion on the CUP? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it is approved. Thank you. Thank you.
May I say one more thing, please? Roger Lane, what a, I used to do a lot of zoning, okay? Long time ago. Roger Lane, what an asset.
Thank you very much.
Well, at least he didn't truncate that.
Yes.
No, I was saying, he didn't stop. So I was like, where is he going with that?
Okay.
Well, and he waited for after the call. Yeah, right?
Okay, good. Next on mine is rezone petition 11,090, the Foside Farm in Town of Cross Plains. Did you get a chance to fill out a form?
Was I way in?
Yes.
No, we didn't.
Okay, yeah, if you'd be sure to, before you leave the singing, fill that out. Thank you. It is part of the official records. Okay, so again, we are on rezone 11,090, the Foside Farm, Town of Cross Plains.
My name is Tom Foside. I am a co-owner and manager of the Foside Farm LLC, and our address is 9485 Braun Road, Section 13, Town of Vermont, and Section 18, Town of Cross Plains. We are requesting a change from Ag 1 exclusive in the Town of Vermont for 3.8 acres to separate the existing residential area from the Ag 1 exclusive area. Also, in the... Also, in the next petition, on the right-hand side of that diagram is the township of Cross Plains, where it is also Ag 1 exclusive and we're requesting it to be changed to Ag 4 to incorporate an entire existing farmhouse area that is separate from the fields. We have, I have reason to believe I have to sell land to resolve some financial problems. And we are also asking in the Vermont area under 11,090 to rezon from, a two-acre parcel, to rezon from Ag 1 exclusive to a two-acre RH1 zoning for a potential building site on the remaining 65 acres in that township that we will have to sell.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
With regards to petition 11,0090, both the Town of Vermont and the Town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with no conditions. Staff is suggesting that a shared driveway agreement be recorded to the proposed A2 parcel to provide access to the remaining 65 acres.
Do you want to just go ahead and address 11,91 also?
Okay, and then also with regards to petition 11,0091, the Town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions. And that also recommended recording a shared driveway agreement with regards to these potential two property owner properties. Oh, and one more.
We had one other suggestion, and that was to restrict these two lots together. I mean, that's the intention, is for them to be sold together. We have the septic drain field, I think, extends on to the lot in Cross Plains. So, that was one of the recommendations we had from the county authority and its office.
So, would it be better for us to vote on 11,091 first? Let's say it's clean and then, or at least, yeah, and then go back to 11,090? Is that what your question is?
Well, no. No, the question is regarding this one and the shared driveway issue as well as the fact that the other two lots will be tied together and potentially sold. Is the surrounding, so that would be sold off, but the surrounding property surrounding the postage lot, postage stamp lot would be in common ownership then? And there is road frontage for that larger piece of land?
They're actually at.
Separate from the two parcels that will be sold off? Will there be a vote from?
The, if you. So, their parcel ends at Braun Road, so it sort of meets at a point. So, the access, so the shared driveway access easement agreement that we're recommending, because essentially your remaining acreage won't have direct access. And of course, you know, with the topography and so on, it makes the most sense to make use of the existing driveway. So, yeah, the property has very little frontage on to the, to Braun Road. So, the area in red essentially represents.
So, in order for that, I mean, even if we have a shared driveway agreement now, there will still need to be a waiver for road frontage and if the other two parcels was sold off.
The property is going to be designed as a 65-acre estate lot with a two-acre zoning boundary on it for the residential house. So, it'll still be in meets and bounds description. There will not be a certified survey map on it that would not require the 66-foot of road frontage.
Even for a residential lot, they don't require that any of the land in common ownership have road frontage?
No, the, again, because they have so little.
I mean, if there's going to be a residential lot, there's going to be a CSM map, isn't there?
The, well, the primary zoning of this property is A1 exclusive. And there's just a small zoning boundary of, yeah, you know, I understand your point that, you know, it'll have a residential purpose to that. But it's being sold as a large estate lot.
It's the entire property, the original farm, if you will, has just that limited a bit of frontage on to Braun Road. And under the town plan, they are technically, you know, eligible for two splits. The question then becomes, no road frontage, how do you get there? And that's why, you know, either they can't use their, exercise their development rights or they have to do it by virtue of the shared driveway access and the easement agreement. And this is in Vermont, anyway. You know, they're supportive of, this is one, if you recall, the whole issue with the road frontage and access, you know, by easement in lieu of frontage. Vermont was one of the main towns that pushed for the inclusion of that provision in the subdivision code. Now, in this case, as Roger indicated, they're not proposing to divide the two-acre building site off. If that were to come in the future, for argument's sake, having the shared driveway access easement agreement in place. And, you know, we've been recommending that those be done in accordance with the standards in Chapter 75.
Yeah, I understand. It just sort of struck me, I know we've dealt with some of these before, where we've had pockets of land basically segregated off where there wasn't road frontage. Kind of clean it up later or so.
Yeah, this is rather unique. This is probably the only access off to the road in the Town of Vermont due to the steep slope topography. Because you have 20% grades all along Braun Road. So, it's going to be rather difficult, even if you were to purchase another person's property to get that, it's going to be rather difficult to get a road or a driveway along Braun Road.
I understand, I was just, it just seemed like one that maybe there shouldn't be a waiver on it as well. But nonetheless, I understand your explanation. I'm worried that it might be a problem down the road in the future. Nonetheless, I'll move approval of 11,090.
I'll second.
With the condition for the deed restriction tying the two lots together and shared driveway.
Further discussion on the motion to approve rezon 11,090? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I'll move approval of rezoned petition 11,091.
I'll second.
Apartment for the driveway agreement.
We have a motion in a second for the rezon 11,091 with the driveway, shared driveway agreement. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and it's approved. Next is rezoned petition 11,092, which is 3365 Civil Pal LLC in the Town of Blooming Grove.
Good evening, my name is Randy Ashburner.
I'm Eric Moreno.
I have resided at 201 Valerie Lane in Monona. And we're here to basically just take the 14-acre property that's currently zoned A1 exclusive and turn it into two 7-acre RH2 lots, parcels.
Anything else? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Roger?
The Town of Blooming Grove has approved this petition with no conditions.
I have a question for staff. Did you insinuate that the fact that the petitioner should consult with the Historical Society for assistance with the burial and moms? Do you think that should be a condition or is that just an informational note?
So, I contacted the State Historical Society. This is unlike the one we had in Primrose, where they were documented. They knew exactly where they were. This was one, my understanding from the Historical Society staff was, you know, it would be good for them to contact us because the way they map these things out is like, you know, 40-acre tracks could be somewhere, may not be any evidence. And so, again, as opposed to the ones that they have inventoried, this is more of a, you'd be wise to do this. My understanding is they've encountered situations where, you know, people are unaware. They start digging, they come across something, and that's the point at which they end up with a problem. So, consulting with them ahead of time. And I have a name and phone number I can pass along to you if that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Chip Brown. He was on vacation last week, or else he's very responsive. But he was on vacation, so we were unable to do that. I believe the, if there are any burial sites, it may be further south and east in the wooded areas.
At any rate, the petitioners are understanding that it's better to absolutely check with them upfront. So, assuming you know that now, or you do know that now, I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a follow-up question. Are there, I mean, legal obligations that if they start some work and something is discovered, they just have to not contact?
That is correct.
Part of the purpose of having that early contact is to avoid that, what could probably add to expense and maybe more of that just be modified, so.
And for, and it could be any burial site. It could have been, you know, the stagecoach coming down the road and the guy fell off and died and they buried him right there. So, it could be from that to early settlement, a farmstead that buried someone on the farm. Or it could be in the burial mound. So, it has a whole selection. So, yeah, it's just why is that? And they have them in 40-acre tracks. So, really, no one, they don't want people going out there searching for tokens. But they want to try to identify where the sites are to the general public, so that's.
Okay, we have a motion to approve rezon 11,092, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the rezon, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is rezon 11,093, the Affel Family Trust in the Town of Primrose.
I'm Cynthia Pretzel, trustee of the Affel Family Trust. And we are asking to rezon a 16-acre from A1 EX to A2 in order to create one residential lot. Properties located northwest of 1174 Primrose Center Road, Section 9, the Town of Primrose.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Primrose has approved this petition with the condition that a town deed restriction that was prepared by the town be recorded on the property. Also, staff is suggesting a 1.81-acre parcel that was acquired by the Affel Trust be rezoned to A1 exclusive to clean up the entire Affel Family Trust property.
Can I just elaborate briefly? The staff recommended conditions incorporate the town conditions. I did contact one of the town board supervisors to indicate their deed restriction document that they forwarded to us would have granted, it's better if we use our deed restriction and incorporate their language as opposed to using their document that grants the county enforcement rights. It's a very bizarre, the town board person I spoke with concurred and felt that when this ends up back in their lap as an amended petition, that they would be fine with it so long as we got the language correct. And that's been communicated to, well, Richard.
Supervisor Miles?
Are you in agreement with the conditions, staff? Do you understand them and are you agreeable to them?
Yes, as far as the deed restriction that we have?
Yeah.
We, yeah, we have a choice.
Supervisor Miles, did you have a question?
I was just going to have a little approval of the three conditions described by staff.
And I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to approve with staff conditions that incorporate the towns, correct?
Yes.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezoned petition 11,094, Julie DiBirle and Town of Christiana.
Hi, I'm Tom Diebavick, 1609 Matthew Way, Stone, Wisconsin. And I am the agent for Joel and Julie. The first part of it was to section off the farmhouse and the buildings. And rezon that for the purpose of selling the balance of 86 acres. They have a buyer for that 86 acres who has chosen the second area of rezon as their home site. And so, that's the purpose of the second one. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Christiana is still reviewing this petition. There are two staff concerns. One, the location of this building site is directly adjacent to a mineral extraction operation. We feel that a deed restriction at minimum be placed on the property stating that mineral extraction operations blast or dusty and have noises. And the development of this site, whoever lives there will be fully aware of that issue. The second item is, comes from the Dane County Water Resources Engineering Division. Because of this long leg and the driveway will be placed in there, they're concerned that if any stormwater management features need to be placed along that leg, that they do so prior to plating so that the leg could be widened out a little bit to keep that stormwater feature, such as a detention basin, on the property.
Yeah, the area where the home site is in that whole strip across there is the high point of the property. And most of the water is going to run to the front, towards the road. And everything to the east is going to run the way it does now, which is down and end up in the pond, way down at the bottom. But that's a reasonable request.
Thank you. Supervisor Miles?
Good question on the stormwater management. Does the width of the portion that touches Highway W, is that wide enough? Or would that need to, with the rezon, because?
That's what's up to whoever is engineering the driveway. So, prior to plating, the agent should make the future owner aware that possibly that needs to be widened. A civil engineer should take a look at it so that the road and the detention facility, if needed, will need to, that it accommodates that. We've had several in the past that they. We've had several in the past that they come into this problem, is that all the stormwater runs down the road, it gets by Highway W, it needs to be treated in a detention basin to remove the sediment, and there's not enough room to do that. So it, we're just making the future owner aware of that, so.
Maybe my question should be, should we be holding off until our determination's made? Well, we have to postpone anyway, but, so if the lot line needs to be adjusted to accommodate the stormwater facility, it's done before the, it's part of the rezone rather than what's back then under the rezone.
That's a, that's a good point.
The part of the driveway that runs east and west is an existing driveway that runs all the way down to the pond area.
I understand, but I just want to make sure that the rezone includes enough land to accommodate a potential stormwater facility.
Yeah, we're advising the petitioner and landowner, I mean, it's up to them to make sure that that is accounted for. Or, you know, if it is what it is, it may be more expensive to put the stormwater detention in. So that's, that's the downfall about expanding. You could do it, but it's going to be more expensive to put the driveway.
If it's needed stormwater detention, would it not also need it right now?
Once again, in order to put a driveway in, you're going to need to have a stormwater management plan.
Okay.
Okay? So it would be in your best interest to hire a civil engineer to look at that, to make sure that you have enough room to put all the driveway and the stormwater detention features in that area.
Okay.
So that's the only item.
So back to supervisor questions, thank you.
Yeah, so I would just say, let's get that determination made before we get this back before us, before we can file a decision.
Okay, is that a motion to postpone?
So I move to postpone.
Second.
We have a motion to postpone due to the lack of town action and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No. Okay. You're welcome. Moving on to petition or rezone 11,095 in Fenton Mackey Reverable Trust in the town of Deerfield.
Is there a waiver on this one?
Yes.
Isaac Fenton Mackey, 3446 Prairie Drive, Deerfield. I have three parcels that have been sold as one, when I bought them in 1992. The two along the bike trail are always been used mostly for hunting. You can see the drummel in the brown section right there, which is really the only buildable area. Everything else is wetland. And I just want to rezone the part next to the bike trail to recreational, because that's really all it's ever been used for, is for hunting. That way I can rezone my, also have my house area rezoned, so it's still compliant with the amount of acreage that it would have. Township wants to, recreational allows a bait station, bait shed, I guess, so they want to put a restriction on there as far as no buildings, which it's not possible to put a building really, and an easement on the front property to the back property, which I'm fine with.
Anything else? No. Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Deerfield has approved this petition with conditions. A deed restriction shall be placed on the proposed recreational parcels to prohibit construction of any buildings. The second item is an access easement shall be shown on Lot Two of the CSM that provides pedestrian access to Lot Three.
I'll make a motion to approve with the, we need to take a waiver.
There's a, sorry, land waiver, section E, third one.
Would you like me to set that up?
Please.
Yeah, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the road frontage requirements for the proposed Lot Three, which is to the east of Lot Two. Survey area is showing a 24-foot wide access easement serving Lot Three. According to the written statement, the owner wants to have the dividing lines along the existing quarter-quarter lines. Lots Two and Three are unbuildable due to the sensitive environmental features and plan for recreational zoning. Lot number Three, however, would have no frontage on the public road. He would like to request a waiver from the frontage requirements since the proposed use of this lot would be for hunting or firewood gathering. The lot does have walking access from its frontage along the bike trail. The glacial drum and bike trail is just to the north.
Move the, grant the waiver. Second.
So we have the motion and the second to approve the land division waiver for public road frontage requirements. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And it's approved, the land division waiver. So we'll go back up to rezone 11,095.
Now I'll come forward with my motion to approve the petition with the town staff conditions. Second.
And so on the motion and second to approve rezone 11,095 with town and staff conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And it's approved.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is rezone 11,096, Kathy Nemery in the town of Sun Prairie.
I think I filled out my form wrong. I'm Brent Terry, representing my mother's estate. We had discovered, we thought that there was two separate properties for, as part of the estate, but we were notified by the town of Sun Prairie that the second property, which is R1A, was not supportive by itself, so we're moving, we're proposing to move R1A back to the original homestead of A21.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Sun Prairie has approved this petition with no conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is rezone petition 11,097, Mancheski Acres in the town of Deerfield.
Scott Blazin, 366 London Road, just adding one acre across the back of the property line between adjacent owners.
Anything else?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Deerfield has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It's approved.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Next is rezone petition 11,101, JCL Rentals in the town of Christiania.
I'm Jeff Lovay, owner of JCL Rentals at 297 Rodney Road, Town of Christiania. We're asking to expand our deed restrictions on the, on the property, which would take it to adding the last building to the site, so there'd be a total of nine condo units. Expanding the usage on one through seven and nine to be able to store personal items in there also. And then on unit eight, we'd also like to be able to store other people's personal stuff such as recreational vehicles, bullets, campers, inside. And then on the previous deed restrictions, we had a limit of businesses and owners, and we'd like to change that to nine owners and nine businesses, so there could be one for each unit. And I guess that's pretty much it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Christiania has approved the expansion of the deed restrictions as listed in the town action report.
With the town staff conditions, I'm accorded. And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with town and staff conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it is approved.
Thank you.
Next, from our previous meeting, we have rezone 11,079, Marion Orland in the town of Pleasant Springs.
Yes, this petition was postponed at the January 24th Zoning and Land Regulation Committee due to no town action. Since that time, the town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition.
I'll move approval with the town staff conditions. Second.
Okay, on the, we have the motion and a second to approve rezone 11,079. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Seeing those. Okay, next we have land division final plat for Scrooge Valley in the town of Middleton, and wishing to speak in support is Rachel Hall.
Hello again. So, I think we were here not very long ago, but we have the, we have the stage now where we have the final plat has been approved by the town. It's the only real update. They approved that on February 6th at the town board level. We've seen the conditions of approval from staff and have discussed them a little bit with Dan, so I feel like we're fine with all of those.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add?
None.
Okay, great. Dan, did you?
Yeah, this proposal, if you're familiar with it, is thirteen lots, not quite sixteen acres. Ten of those are residential lots, and there is one existing house on this plat, so there's nine that are being proposed for development. Lots will be served by private onsite septic systems. There are no sensitive environmental features located within the plat. Outlots are for stormwater management facilities and will be maintained either by the lot owners or by private homeowners association. Valley Beach Drive will be extended to the north to serve lots one through seven. Fallen Oak Drive, which is at the north end of the plat, is being extended to the west to serve lots nine and 10. There's just been one new condition that was added to this go-around since the preliminary plat was conditionally approved. Comments back from the Public Health Department indicated that the existing septic system on proposed Lot Four, which is the existing home site, shall be reconfigured to keep all of the components within the proposed lot boundaries.
I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is land division 52. Okay, thank you. In the town of Burke. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Zimmerman. I work for the land and water division, and we are helping facilitate CSM rezone and petition for a variance from a driveway requirement. The Dane County is hoping to purchase Lot Two of CSM 5744, which is a little hard to make out, but it's the larger parcel in the center that Token Creek runs through. And part of our purchase contract with the John Trust and as facilitated by Paul Toot is that we receive a 33-foot access to Mary Idol Lane at the southeast corner of the lot in order to be able to reach the southern part of the parcel that's difficult to reach from Highway 19. We do have quite a bit of frontage on Highway 19 as well.
Anything else?
Yeah, so this is the lot here, and obviously you've got Token Creek that runs through. There's sensitive environmental features all over the place. They've got plenty of road frontage here. They, the Dane County parks would like to purchase the 33 feet from the residential area down here and have a access coming off of Mary Idol Drive, so. Technically, they've got plenty of road frontage, but with a reconfiguration of this parcel, staff thought that it'd be best to bring the waiver request before the committee for action, so. Because technically, it's not 66 feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
Grant the waiver. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant the waiver. Further discussion?
Just, Jan, while you're here, I'm just trying to understand from a parkland point of view, what's south of where Mary Idol Lane?
That's a large private parcel of land, agricultural.
So that, that could yet be developed or otherwise dependent?
It could potentially.
We don't know what's going to happen. Okay, thank you.
And then in addition, the rezone petition that's tied to this will be on the March public hearing, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you, Jan.
I thought I had it mapped out.
Okay. Next is land division 54, final plat for the reserve.
Yeah, this is located in the city of Sun Prairie, so this is before you for a certification of non-objection by the Department of Administration's standards. As far as, 313 lots are being proposed, 201 acres, this is just on the north end of Sun Prairie. You have County Highway C to the west. As far as parks go, you have Outlot Three is being shown as future park space, will be maintained by the city of Sun Prairie. Outlot Eleven is being proposed for a future school site. And then several of the, of the other outlots are designed for regional infiltration or reserved for environmental corridors and open space.
So it's a motion, non-objection?
Correct, certification.
Subway.
Okay. Okay, we have the motion and the second for certification, approval of certification of non-objection. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Okay, next is Resolution 526, men contract 1,012,850 between Ayers Associates and Dane County.
And Fred Osley is here from Dane County Land Information. So the two resolutions are interconnected. Last fall, the county board approved 12,850, which is a contract with Ayers Associates. Since that time, we worked with the state of Wisconsin and a number of other counties to pursue a USGS three-dep, it's a three-D elevation program grant, and we received notice in January that Wisconsin was awarded a $499,000 grant, of which Dane County was eligible for $156,000 to go towards our project. So the contract amendment is there for to cover the additional work and specifications that USGS is requiring. We also have the benefit to get a few other derivative products that we would not have had an opportunity to get without this grant for Dane County, so we will be getting one-foot contours countywide as part of this, this grant program. So that's the 526, and then 527 is connected with that. That is the basically accepting the USGS grant. Once the state works out their agreement with the USGS, then we would contract with the state of Wisconsin.
Thank you. Questions?
With the, I'm guessing to go to one-foot contours, that would be a lot for data, right?
Right, yeah.
So it's like an impact on server and hardware requirements?
Dane, the LIO has already purchased 17 terabytes worth of space through IM, so we do have the capacity, would just be working with information management to allocate that space on our virtual servers.
You guys like the idea of one-foot contours?
Yes, it assists us in floodplain management significantly.
Slope analysis, a whole host of things. And it's, it's LiDAR data, I don't know if you I don't know if you're familiar with that term. It's, it's light imaging and BIDAR detection. So it's not just terrain data. It also allows us to build 3D models. And we can identify building footprints. We can make through intensity values a, almost a false image. And that would help municipalities across the county identify impervious surface areas. City of Fitchburg is interested in that.
Impervious surface areas isn't naturally occurring impervious? Or already existing, like?
Already existing parking lots. It is all at the point of the flight when it, when it, when it is done. But the city of Fitchburg has used this data in the past for stormwater modeling to be in compliance with DNR requirements. So this just opens it up now for a lot more people and a much higher quality data set.
All villages and cities have to have a regional stormwater management plan for their entire city or village limit.
Right. DNR rule. Yeah. It was all the settlement regulations.
286, that number.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll move a, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Move approval of Resolution 526.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution 526. And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Resolution 527?
I'll recommend approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve 527 and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and waiting all evening. Next is Ordinance Amendment 67, amending Chapter 10 of the Dane County Code of Ordinances Regarding Conditional Use Powers.
This petition was introduced at the county board at December 16th, 2016, and referred to the Zoning and Land Regulation Committee. Zoning and Land Regulation Committee held a public hearing on January 24th and postponed it for 30 days until we received town action. Town, mostly all the towns have taken action on this. 23 towns were in support and the two towns were in opposition of the CUP appeal change. And it is before you tonight for recommendation to the full county board.
Second.
Okay, on the Ordinance Amendment 67, we have a motion and a second to approve forwarding it to the full county board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. And that's all on our agenda.
Move adjournment. Second.
And on the adjournment, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.
I can't get my town action to open up, but which, which town opposed it?